Call of January 2nd, 2018, City Council Meeting to Order. In vocation, we have Pastor Buskirk.
Mayor Thurmond, City Council, it's an honor.
Fellow citizens.
Let's pray together. Lord God, especially during this season where we've heard the stories of stars and stables, we're humbled to realize that you are God longed to be with your people. The distance you'll travel just to delight in our midst. We give you thanks for being a God with that kind of heart. And we pray tonight with all that we say and with all that we hear that you'd give us truly ears to hear and mouths to speak that we might communicate clearly to one another. We pray for wisdom that as we listen to one another that we might make the wisest of decisions. And I thank you, Lord God, as this body serves your people here in Broken Arrow that they serve you. That there's not an individual in this community for whom your love isn't meant, for whom you haven't paid the greatest of sacrifices. And so as we serve them this evening, we pray that you would favor us to put a smile on your face, to serve you well and to serve them well. We ask for your wisdom, for your power, for your guidance. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Here.
Parks?
Here.
Lester?
Here.
Booty?
Here.
Thurmond?
Here.
Please stand and join Council Parks in the pledge.
Salute pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the next item five is the consent agenda. We have someone that wants to speak on item I, and I'd like to remove item O and P. I have a conflict. Any other items to be removed?
To approve the consent agenda, exclude item I, O, and P. Was that P?
Yeah, P, yes.
Second.
How about C?
Huh? With C?
That's, it's on, that's.
No, it's on the general council.
Got it.
Okay, motion second. Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Booty?
Yes.
Thurmond?
Yes. Item I. We have, someone want to, Michael or someone want to explain item I? Larry?
Absolutely. Good evening, Council. I'm Larry Curtis, and we're Plan Development Manager within the Development Services Division for the city of Broken Arrow. Item I is a rezoning request from agricultural to RS3, which is residential three with 3,000 square feet minimum for the lot. This is located near Midway and off of Houston Street. And the applicant, this portion of the property is located just within the city limits of Broken Arrow. It's a 40-acre tract, which abuts another 40-acre tract that has currently had a preliminary plat and conditional final plat approved by City Council. This particular plat is used as a connection, a bridge between the two that will connect back down to Houston Street. This request is in conformance with the comprehensive plan, which this area shows is level two. And that is, it's pretty much in line with everything that the comprehensive plan has. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have or that the citizen may have as well.
Okay, any questions of Larry?
I see the recommendation from the planning commission was a five and no vote.
That is correct, sir, yes.
Okay, well, thank you. We have everything, we'll ask you everything. Thank you, Larry. We have Ed Lindblad. Please state your name, name and address, please.
Ed Lindblad, 7872 South 260th East Avenue, Broken Arrow, 74014. A homeowner in Kensington Ridge Phase One, which is adjacent to the property that is in question. Looking for more clarification, more so than anything right now, in regards to the thought process and the planning of it. As you will see, it shows the development of Phase Two is to be done first. Our concern is the access road going to that development off of 81st Street. What is, what defines an access road? Is it gravel? Is it asphalt? Is it going to be a permanent road that's going to be used for future development? Otherwise, all we can see is that the equipment that'll be moving in there for the development of it is going to go through Kensington Ridge One, which is a rural residential road as defined by Wagner County. We're concerned about the traffic going in and out of there. So I'm looking for clarification in regards to what the access road is. Also would like to get some information in regards to why is the developing Phase Two first instead of Phase One, which is off of 81st Street? If you're looking as a homeowner of a quarter million dollar home, I would suspect you would want to have that visibility in some way, shape, or form. I'd just like, we'd like to get a better understanding of the thought process in regards to developing Phase Two, which is basically out of sight until you drive through our neighborhood to get to it. Also concerned about the residential zoning of R3 to R2. Both Kensington Ridge One and Kensington Ridge Two are R2 zonings, of which Kensington Ridge Two, which is also on the agenda for tonight, is 39.85 acres, of which they're going to have 45 lots. Ridgewood Estates is going to be 40 acres with 88 lots. We're concerned about the traffic flow that may be coming up and down 81st Street and also going through our neighborhood, existing neighborhood, to get to Phase Two.
Okay.
One other thing we have a concern about, at the planning commission, we were told all the trees in this area are going to be knocked down. Looking at the area from the western side of that property, there's a bank of trees along with a power pole that's going to be an area that you can't build on. Our request, our concern would be if there's any trees that could be left available to keep that rural feeling and that rural setting, anything to be done on that would be appreciated.
And that will be up to us, that'll be up to the developer and how they.
Understood, understood.
Larry, would you like to answer those questions?
The first question was asked was, why is this, you know, Phase Two being implemented first? And the reason for that is, is that this northern 40 acres is located within the jurisdiction of the city of Broken Arrow, where the southern portion is located within Wagner County. The applicant has submitted a request to have the southern portion annexed into the city of Broken Arrow, and that is currently in legal department, and that will be coming to City Council for approval. But in order to move forward with the whole project, they are moving forward with the request for this portion to be rezoned. And then, once annexation is approved by City Council, they'll be moving forward with the southern section as well, as a part of the application rezoning request as well. The question about access, they will be providing a road by separate instrument in Wagner County to the portion of this property, and they will be using that as their access road for construction. And that, once a majority of the construction within the back portion is complete, that portion will become a part of a regular approved Broken Arrow standard road. And so, and it is being created using their proposed preliminary plat for the southern portion, so it'll match, it'll be as a part of that development.
Will the southern portion be R3 as well?
That, as with everything in this area, it'll most likely be Level Two coming in as a part of the annexation process, and so that would be what the applicant will be proposing is RS3 zoning to the south as well. So that those two tracks or phases will then match up with one another.
And it was stated that it's 40 acres with 88 lots?
Correct.
Which is not very dense at all. It's, I guess it's larger lots?
Yeah, in regards to that, Kensington Ridge Two and Phase One, they are what would be classified as residential estate lots. They are large half-acre lots. And the request that the developer had with Kensington Ridge Phase Two was to be zoned RS2 with a PUD to allow for larger lots and subsequently have carbon gutter associated with that. The issue that have, that both subdivisions have is access. Fire code requires a minimum of two access points if you have over 30 lots. And so because Kensington Ridge Phase One was developed within Wagner County, Wagner County standards at the time of development only required one point of access. For the city of Broken Arrow, we require two. So in essence, both developments need each other in order for them to move forward because they both need points of access onto Houston Street. And that's the reason why for, instead of RS2, that's the reason why for RS3 is just slightly higher density for development, which the comprehensive plan in this area and the neighborhood to the west is similar to as well.
Yeah, I'm confused, what, the neighborhood to the west, what is it? What is it?
This?
Yes.
It is currently zoned A1. It was annexed into the city of Broken Arrow many, many years ago, and until, and at that time, it was annexed in as agricultural. If there was to be a change to the subdivision, that area would be required to turn, be brought up to current zoning codes, and that would be to RS3 type zoning. So in lot size comparison, the request for the zoning of RS3 is comparable to the lot sizes existing to the west.
That's what I was trying to understand, is if, to the west, even though it's not zoned RS3, the density is consistent with RS3. So we're not sticking RS3 in the middle of RS2, is what I'm trying to come.
Correct, yes.
So when it was annexed, it kept the, it wasn't given a annexation number or zoning or anything?
It was given A1, and I would have to go back and research much more as why it wasn't given the current requirements, which is whenever anything is annexed in the city of Broken Arrow, it's given an A in front of it for annexation and then given an equivalent zoning designation next to it. This was done, I think, before this current zoning ordinance was put in place, and so that's perhaps why it wasn't given an according annex residential R3 designation.
Okay. And so all that would be in Level Two, though, correct?
Correct, all this.
Allows R1 and R2 and R3.
Mm-hmm, R2 and R3, yes.
Okay.
And in regards to the trees, as Mayor Thurmond had indicated, that would be left up to the developer to make that decision.
Okay.
So there will be a road coming off of Houston through the middle of, or through a portion of that to allow access, so it's not having to go through the neighborhoods?
It would be right here, and we have already worked with the developers, indicating that they will file that with the Wagner County Courthouse. They don't have to have that approved by Wagner County Board of County Commissioners. They just file that within the clerk's office, and then that becomes an accessible road all the way back to, to the back portion of the property.
Is that one of the requirements for approval of the rezoning, is that that road be, okay?
That that will be there.
But we don't have any jurisdiction over that road.
That is correct, sir. We do not have any jurisdiction over the road, though we do have a requirement in over, that the road be put in place, that way fire code can be met.
But we do have jurisdiction over the development as far as the developer having to maintain that road for dust control and those type of things.
Absolutely, yes, yes. That would be a requirement that we have.
And then, once it's annexed in, we'll have jurisdiction over it being our city.
Yes.
But right now, it's not.
And that's the same location where the city street will occur?
Yes, the developer has provided an overall preliminary design for the subdivision, has indicated that that is where the road is going to be with the overall master plan of that project.
Does Council have any more questions of Larry or Mr. Lindblad?
Just for clarity, in regards to the access road?
You mentioned that that road would be used as part of the plan for Phase One, which is going to be close to 81st Street. As Phase Two is developed, will that road be used by the public to get off of 81st Street to go directly back to that neighborhood? Or will it still be a dirt road until Phase One is developed? Secondly, that, just for clarification, we're talking 90 lots in Phase Two and 88, so we're looking at about 180 lots in this, this area combined to the 100 lots that we're going to have just to the east of there, correct?
Okay, that's helpful.
But in regards to that road?
Yes.
Do you want to ask that question?
That would be my question in regards to the road. Is it going to be a road that's going to be used from its, obviously during construction as they're developing it, it's going to be a dirt road with dirt control and things to that neighborhood? But as that is developed and that is starting to be, the houses are starting to be built back there, will that turn into an asphalt road, a road for direct access? Also, will that go in there?
As Larry stated.
Also, in regards to that, if Kensington Ridge Two and the estates at Ridgewood are both, all three going to be city of Broken Arrow, does that then subject Kensington Ridge One to annexation to the city of Broken Arrow at some point in time?
Only if it's, only if this subdivision volunteers. There's no mandatory annexation. You know, we're not doing mandatory annexations, so if they volunteer and they want to be annexed, they can be.
Okay.
So.
And I think this map that is now up there gives us a sense of what, and I would presume once the annexed part, Larry, you can confirm this, but once the portion is annexed, that front portion, the southern portion is annexed, the road would then become subject to all the jurisdiction requirements. It would have to be paved, it would have to be gutted and all that, and maintained as a city road, correct?
That would be correct, sir, yes.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
I believe so. So, once it is, once it is developed, once the houses are developed in Phase Two, how will, how will the public get back to that area?
They'll, they'll drive on the road.
Which road? Kensington Ridge Road?
No, the new road, the new road that's coming in.
Right.
That answers my question. Thank you.
Any more questions of Council?
Make a motion to approve BAZ 1992 and request rezone 40 acres from A1 to RS3 as recommended by the planning commission and staff.
Second.
Motion second, discussion. Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Booty?
Yes.
Thurmond?
Yes.
Considering items O and P, I believe they can be considered together. Is there any motion in that regard?
Make motion to approve items O and P.
Second.
Motion second having been made, is there any further discussion or questions? Seeing non-roll call vote, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Booty?
Yes.
Thurmond?
Yes. Okay, item seven is presentation of 2017 annual report.
Good evening, Mayor, Council members. Krista Flash, Communications Director. As you know, this has been a very busy year for the city of Broken Arrow. There's been a lot of great successes, and we highlight many of those successes in the 2017 annual report. Some of those accomplishments include the opening of the Stony Creek Hotel and Conference Center, as well as the partnership with Milestone Capital on the $18 million mixed-use development right here in the Rose District. The annual report is available online at brokenarrowok.gov/annualreport, and we'll also have copies available for pickup here at City Hall. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions to Krista?
Another great job.
Thank you.
Another great job.
Lot of good stuff in here.
Krista, you want to mention who we're going to be distributing it to personally?
Yes, we will be mailing this to all of our state elected officials as well, as well as our federal elected officials, and many of the partners here in our community, including the Chamber EDC and the school district.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great piece.
Okay, we do not have anyone signed up for citizens opportunity to address the council, so we'll move to item 9A, general council business, consideration discussion and possible approval authorization to purchase one full-size sport utility vehicle for the fire department. Chief Moore.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. This item is a routine replacement of an aiding staff vehicle. However, we elected to go with the Chevrolet Tahoe, which was not the cheapest of all SUVs on the market, but we decided to go with the Chevrolet Tahoe for several reasons. First of all, the dual batteries come standard on a Chevrolet Tahoe, which provides the electric capacity that we need for running the lights and sirens, radios, and emergency equipment. Also, the Chevrolet Tahoe comes with pre-wired, pre-wiring for all of those components, such as the lights and radios. And lastly, we have other Tahos in the fleet, so there's some consistency, the consistency, the consistency there for maintenance. We did buy the Tahoe, we're asking to buy the Tahoe off the state contract. The other SUVs that are available on the market are the Dodge Durango and the Ford, and they are, the cheapest one is a $3,000 cheaper, but they do not come with dual batteries and the pre-wiring, so we would have to use aftermarket wiring to, that wouldn't be covered by the manufacturer's warranty, to outfit the vehicles for the lighting packages and so forth. So we felt like the Chevrolet Tahoe is the most advantageous vehicle to purchase, had a state contract list price of $31,877, and we would recommend that we approve the purchase of the Chevy Tahoe off the state contract.
Questions, Jeremy?
I'm making a motion that we approve the purchase of the Chevrolet Tahoe from Vance Chevrolet pursuant to the Oklahoma statewide contract SW 35.
Second.
Motion second, discussion. Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Booty?
Yes.
Thurmond?
Yes.
Item B, consideration discussion, possible approval authorization to execute resolution number 1069. And Alex said he'd be real quick.
Yes, I did say that. Mr. Mayor, Council, Alex Mills, Engineering Director, here tonight to request approval for condemnation of a piece of property that's required for the 23rd Street widening from Kenosha to Houston. The funding for the right-of-way acquisition is part of an STP funding program. It's a cost share of 80% for ODOT, 20% for us. As part of the agreement, we're required to pay all of the wire right-of-way upfront, costs upfront, then they will reimburse us 80% after we acquire it. We've been negotiating for this property for a while and have made a fair market value offer. It's, the building is abatement systems, it's located roughly southeast of College and 23rd Street, a little closer over to Old Highway 51, if you know the area. So we need to proceed to condemnation if the city would, if the council would allow that, and that's our request. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions of Alex?
Make a motion to approve resolution 1069, authorize its execution.
Second.
Thank you.
Motion second, discussion. Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Booty?
Yes.
Thurmond?
Yes.
Item 9C, consideration discussion, possible approval of authorization to execute resolution number 1073. Larry?
Curtis? Yes. Good evening, Council again. This is a resolution in support of senior housing within the city of Broken Arrow, specifically within the area of 209th Street in Kenosha. Zoom out a little bit. Keep going, there you go. That's good. The red area over, as seen in this area, and I'll point up here, is Level Four within our comprehensive plan, which shows for commercial development. When this, the comprehensive plan was developed back in 1998 and destined that there would be a corridor here for, along the creek turnpike, a lot of the area that was suggested because it was so, such raw land was to be for Level Four use. Since that time, there have been some instances where developers have come before us and asked if multifamily would perhaps be a good use in this area. The resolution that is before you is not changing the comprehensive plan to anything nor changing any of the zoning, it's simply a resolution of support for multifamily, specifically senior multifamily within this area. The applicants for this resolution are here to answer any questions that you may have, and of course, I'm here to answer any questions that you may have as well.
So what is the, you say it's not changing the comprehensive plan?
Correct.
Does it have zoning on it right now?
Yes, the property, the potential property in the area is zoned A1, which is agricultural. The reason for the resolution of support is for funding to the Oklahoma Housing Finance Authority. It's no longer a requirement that OFMA, OFMA requires that. It is still to show support from the community that senior housing is important to them and that a project such as this would be fitting within the city of Broken Arrow itself.
So is it going to be developed then without the zoning, a still A1 zoning?
No, sir. They will still, as the resolution states, they will still have to go through the comprehensive plan amendment process, the rezoning process, and the platting process before any of that actually gets moved forward. They have many, I won't say challenges, they have some items that they need to tick off their list before moving forward with the actual project itself. But this does help support going to OFA for additional funding opportunities.
So this is a resolution to support their application for tax credits, more or less, and then they'll have to go through comp plan amendment and zoning before anything can be built there, but.
That is correct.
This is just supporting their resolution, their application.
That is correct.
Do we have any questions of Larry or of the applicant? Okay, we're good then. We have a motion.
I make a motion to approve resolution number 1073, subject to a change in the comprehensive plan and rezoning application, authorize its execution.
Second.
Motion second. Any questions, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Booty?
Yes.
Thurmond?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to item 9D, consideration discussion and possible approval of authorization to execute resolution number 1080. Trevor?
Yes, Mayor and City Council. Resolution number 1080 involves a resolution of a lawsuit filed by Daniel and Kimberly O'Barr, who resided at 1245 West Louisville Street. It involves a lawsuit that they filed against the city of Broken Arrow alleging that they had incurred a sewer infiltration allegedly by the city of Broken Arrow. Resolution 1080 authorizes the settlement in the amount of $25,000 with the city not admitting any liability in this matter. We would request that the journal entry of judgment would go before a district court for approval as it exceeds the $25,000, as it is a $25,000 amount. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have on this item.
Any questions, Trevor?
I make a motion to approve resolution number 1080 and authorize its execution.
Second.
Motion second, discussion. Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Booty?
Yes.
Thurmond?
Yes.
Item 10, previous ordinances are R9, 11 ordinances are R9, remarks and inquiries by governing body members. Just want to say happy new year to everyone. Any remarks or inquiries?
It's cold outside.
Yeah, it is very cold. Well, then we'll move on to item 13, remarks and updates by city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, happy new year. Just, just a couple of items. First, I just wanted to let the council know that we are in the process of preparing a packet of information for you in connection with the special meeting that's going to be held on Saturday, January 13th, to begin the vetting process for selecting the final projects and initiatives that will be in the various packages that the council will also have to decide a date, it will go before the voters and ask for their consideration of the next general obligation bonds. Probably early next week, we're going to get that packet out to you, so it will be a.
a list of the projects, along with some additional information for finance and for Mr. Gale about possible dates for the elections, the election dates in June and August, as well as our capacity, our bonding capacity, keeping it at the current mileage rate level. And so you'll have all information, and then we'll, we'll go over that at the, at the special session. And then as a result of the discussions, we're also going to ask council for authorization to put together three community forums in the month of February to take input on the preliminary projects and initiatives that, that you have, that you've decided to go forward with. Right now, the, I believe, the total package of projects, which includes all the staff is recommending, as well as many of the projects that the residents put in the citizen survey, there was a lot of consistency in what they were thinking and what the staff's been thinking. It's around three hundred million dollars worth of projects, and so the council's going to have to go through the painstaking process of whittling that down. For example, if you say we're going to be looking at a hundred and fifty, a hundred and fifty million over eight or ten years, staff may recommend that we narrow it down to two hundred million, and then we take those to the public and get their input, and then council make a final decision. So it's going to be, it's going to be kind of exciting, because this will be a very large bond package. In comparison, the last three packages the city did in '08, eleven and fourteen totaled about a hundred and forty-six or forty-seven million, and with the capacity that we have, with the debt rolling off and the, and the assessed value of the city being higher, we have, we have the capacity to go in a, in an eight or nine or ten-year proposal to go above that. So it is kind of exciting, because as you saw from the survey, there are a lot of, very, very, the satisfaction of, over how the city's doing is great, but yet there are a lot of needs that we need to address, so it's going to be pretty exciting. Speaking of the citizen survey, I know the council's going through that, the staff is going through it as well. As it was mentioned last meeting, it's broken down into the various departments, so each of the directors looking at their areas specifically to come back with recommendations. There was also a part in there where folks had comments about the school district. I passed it along to, to the superintendent, Dunlop, for her to, to review, and I'll also try to go through it to see if there's anything about the union school district specifically, and I'll make sure that the superintendent gets, gets that as well, so they'll have that information. I think that's important. A couple of other things I want to mention is that I have selected the finalists for face-to-face interviews for the finance director. I have narrowed it with Mr. Gale's assistance down to four individuals. We have one internal and we have three external, and probably within the next two weeks to three weeks, we'll have those face-to-face completed, and then I should be in a position to extend an offer sometime towards the end of the month. So I'm anticipating that the new finance director, and we'll be starting, I would say, sometime by the end of February, early March, if, if not sooner. So very excited about that, getting that process going forward. And just a final item is we've started the review process for capital for the FY 2019 budget. So at the request of Russell and Finance, we moved that up about two months early to give us more, a little bit more time to actually plan and go through the projects, and as always, we have more requests than we have funds. So, you know, the red pen's going to have to come out, so we can get within the comfortable level, but those are just four things I want to mention this evening. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions? Thank you, Michael. We do not have executive session, we need another motion.
Make a motion with adjourn.
Second.
Motion second. Roll call, please.
Wimpy? Yes. Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Booty?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Call the Broken Arrow Economic Development Authority meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Wimpy? Here. Parks?
Here.
Lester?
Here.
Booty?
Here.
Thurman?
Here.
Any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion second. Roll call, please.
Wimpy? Yes. Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Booty?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes, there's no public hearings, no general authority business and no executive session.
Make a motion with adjourn.
Isn't there one item? Okay, no, okay, I'm sorry.
Still make a motion.
And I'll second.
Motion second. Roll call, please.
Do we have?
New year.
We do have an item on general counsel, don't we?
Do we?
Not on Bama, that's on Beta.
I'm on Beta.
You and Michael look at the same agenda, I think.
Wimpy? Yes. Parks?
Yes, I think.
Lester?
Absolutely.
Booty?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Call the Broken Arrow Economic Development Authority meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Wimpy? Here. Parks?
Here.
Lester?
Here.
Booty?
Here.
Thurman?
Here.
And we have one item on consent agenda, any, anyone like that removed?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion second. Roll call, please.
Wimpy? Yes. Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Booty?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
And we do have an item on general authority business. It's item five A, consideration discussion, possible approval, resolution number 1079 corrected. Norman Stevens.
Good afternoon. The, the item before you, after last Broken Arrow Economic Development Authority meeting, there were several concerns about the agreement between the authority and Sound Mine. I know Beth Ann, the next day, went through, pulled each one of those out, made the changes, and sent the red line version back to their attorney. Over the weekend, we received the copy back, all those changes had been addressed. Beth Ann was unable to be back for tonight, she had to take care of some business out of state. One of the things before we address the economic development agreement, the fact sheet that was prepared puts the amount that is being paid for this amount, or for this property at one million dollars, that's, that's inaccurate. It's one point two million dollars. The agreement is, indicates one point two million dollars, so that is not correct. I went over the last Beta meeting and matched it to the contract, as did the deputy city attorney, Trevor Dennis, and found that all those items that were of concern, I believe, have been addressed. Some of the ones on page three included language, or added language to include an acute evaluation center, emergency room, and an area for intensive outpatient services. Page six added the language plan, unit development and PUD, showing the overlay zoning districts intended as an alternative to conventional development, complete in accordance with the city, Broken Arrow zoning ordinance and other applicable codes. Article two, two point one, added the language, including an acute evaluation center, emergency room, and an area for intensive outpatient services, as well as all the infrastructure. Article four, five point two, was one that received considerable amount of discussion from the authority, and the language of the thirty years was removed. The language that was added is that Sound Mine shall have the ability to seek an amendment to the PUD in strict accordance with the city of Broken Arrow zoning ordinances and applicable codes, and with the city of Broken Arrow, I'm sorry, said approval of any amendments not to be unreasonably withheld, conditioned or delayed. Article four, five point four, was another item that received considerable comments. We removed the provision of fifteen years and added the language that they shall have the ability to revise the projected parameters through an amendment to the PUD in strict accordance with the city of Broken Arrow zoning ordinance and applicable codes. And then article six, six point one, under the purchase, sale and conveyance, it removed the language indicating deed restrictions will remain in effect for a period of thirty